Good evening. I call to order this Morrisville Town Council work session in preparation for our retreat. At this time, entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda. Motion from Councilmember Rao, second from Councilmember Johnson. All of us in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously seven zero. At this time, I'd like to recognize Town Manager Brandon Zutima.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for clarification, that was an adoption of the entire retreat agenda. Just want to make sure we're clear on that. Thank you. And thank you for just a moment. We're looking forward to a really good retreat again this year. We're excited to be able to travel west to Boone at your request so we can lend a little support to the economy there, given what they've been struggling through. So again, we'll depart tomorrow and would like everyone here at noon, or as super close to noon as you can, so we could be on the road at 12:30 and stick to the schedule we've got established. Want to thank our staff for being here tonight. This is always a good opportunity to just not have anything to talk about, but talk about whatever you want and interact a little bit. We don't do that very often, so appreciate everyone that could be here doing that. And I know we've got some folks that'll be sticking around for a couple of the presentations, but you'll hear from some of those staff members this weekend. They put a lot of time into preparing, I think, some good information and some good discussion with you that will help guide us towards some budget decisions, some CIP decisions, a lot of good economic development information as well. So it should be a really good discussion this weekend. And as a reminder for everyone, we will have lunch on the bus tomorrow for you, and we'll make sure that we have addressed any particular dietary concerns. For anybody coming on the bus, we will have a lunch, drinks, and snack for the ride down, same for the ride back. And then anyone attending, we do generally go casual. Mayor, I assume you're okay with that, again, this year? Yes. Okay. I think that is the reminders I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. So we have two discussion items this evening. We're going to first hear from Jeffrey Brown and Kimberly Conley about sustainability. We're going to take a 15-minute break, and then we'll talk about fees and other revenues. At this time, I'd like to pass it to Jeffrey Brown and Miss Conley.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Good evening. You have 15 minutes.
Well, with that said, I'm going to turn it directly over to Kimberly. This is her program, and certainly she is so hard to sell of sustainability in our department. So you'll hear from Kimberly on the many great things that we're doing in sustainability. I'm here to help answer questions when we get to that point.
If you want to let us know, do you want to go through the whole presentation first? Do you want questions as we go? How would you like to handle it?
Thank you for the question. I would love to go through the entire presentation. So if you can document your questions for the end for that discussion, that would be perfect. Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. I'm really excited to be kicking off the retreat with this sustainability program. It is not my program, not to correct you, sir, but it is the town's program, right? And it is very, very much a collective effort, and we're going to talk about that at great length this evening. So our presentation overview. We are going to talk about the timeline. You do have a copy of the timeline that was approved by you back in 2021. We have made some alterations to that timeline because we've been able to push a lot of different actions forward based on the collective support of the town staff, particularly the Sustainability Task Force, which we're going to talk about in great length. But we will go specifically through fiscal years '23, '24, and '25 and kind of talk about specifics as to what items did we add that were not in the original timeline, what items did we just move up from a future year, and what items are actually new, what actions were not identified in the initial timeline. We're also going to talk about solar power. So we've got, the town has made some significant strides with solar energy. As you know, we just put solar on this building late December, so we're excited about that. We're going to then segue to a budget overview where we talk about how do we use our base budget. We're just going to talk about fiscal year '25 as far as the base budget goes. But we are going to also talk about grants that we've received for the program since its inception, as well as all rebates and other incentives. I apologize for putting my back to you. I'm just trying to see the screen here. We're then going to talk about the Master Sustainability Plan goals and the strategies as far as much of that information I did provide in the administrative report that I submitted to you back in September. So I just wanted an opportunity to kind of review that with you and make sure that we were all on the same page as far as how we're tracking with our goals. Where are we at, right? We're at January, right, 2025, and the goals that we've, the goals that we've identified are, most of them are by 2026. So I'm going to give you a little bit of a temperature gauge on that. We've got some notable highlights that we'd like to talk about. Many of these things you already know of, but we just want to make, you know, public record of those, talk about those in a little bit more detail. Those items do directly support the Master Sustainability Plan. They just weren't identified specifically in the actions within the plan when it was developed back in 2021. And then finally, of course, we have Q and A. So I wanted to start with this beautiful picture. This is the Sustainability Task Force, and the task force is made up of a member from each department across town. We currently have about 22 members that work on this task force, so everyone listed there is not in the picture. But this is the team that truly rolls up their sleeves and helps to get the work done. I am a program of one. I have an amazing public works department that I lean on a lot, but the Sustainability Task Force is also a really major component of our success, our collective success. So I want to make sure, as we go through the presentation and we look at the different fiscal years and what we've done, I'm going to identify what subgroups within that, the Sustainability Task Force supported those efforts or those actions. They very much mirror the focus areas that we have. So think natural environment, built environment, energy and water, and so on. And so I'm going to call those out as we go through and talk about the actions, especially the ones that we've been able to forward from a future year or new actions. So they're incredible. We meet quarterly. The subgroups, we meet every six weeks, so it's a lot of meetings. It is, it's a big ask of staff, and we try to keep it reasonable as far as what we're working on. It's very targeted, but it's tremendously successful. I've actually shared the task force idea and concept with many of my peers within the Southeast Sustainability Directors Network. They're very interested in how to get more engagement from their teams, and so we've been able to be an example in that way. Okay, so segueing into fiscal year '23. So what my plan is for the next three years as we go through the presentation is to really just focus on the items that are in different colors on your slide. And so just for further identification, right, purple is an action that was advanced from a future year. Green is a new action that was not previously identified, and orange actions are actions that were delayed. So the first one I wanted to talk about is energy audits. So energy audits, we thought we were going to have to phase those out over multiple years. We were able to get a grant from Duke Energy to do audits for our major, our six major facilities all at once. That was a $40,000 project. We were able to get $20,000 from Duke Energy, so it made sense for us to go ahead and do all of the audits at once. So that's an example of something that we were able to condense and do in a quicker timeframe. The next item is evaluate hybrid EV needs, draft and approve the fleet policy, and that was advanced from fiscal year '24. So we had done, when I first came on board, we did a fleet study, and we also did an EVSE study, or assessment, rather, to see where we should put EV charging in the town. So with both of those items, we were able, we felt very well informed to go ahead and not only evaluate a fleet policy, but to evaluate it, draft it, and approve it. And Mr. Brown was very instrumental in that project, as was the entire public works team. So that's something that we were able to get done in a much quicker timeframe than we had imagined. Number three is implement solar. You're going to see a lot of implement solar on our timeline, which I think is something to be really proud of. And there's lots of different reasons why we have solar. We've been constructing solar every year for the last couple of years. In this particular case, we added 75 KW to PSMS, and we were able to take advantage of elective pay, which is a federal tax incentive of 30% that, this is the first time in history that nonprofits were able to take advantage of that. And so we took advantage of that. We actually had to delay the commissioning of that project by a couple of months so that we could take advantage of that $50,000. we could take advantage of that $50,000 tax incentive, but we were able to do that, so that's really good news. So the goal for, sorry, I should have, I printed my copy so small, and because I'm in sustainability, I didn't want to reprint it larger, so I'm having to really give my eyes a test here. The native plant goal, so rather than just draft a policy, we wanted to draft, we wanted to evaluate, draft, and approve a policy to require a 70% minimum for native plant materials, thank you, sir, native plant materials, for all town projects. And we have such commitment from our grounds team within Public Works, it's incredible. Typically, we're closer to 100% natives for the town projects that we do, so I think that's really commendable. And then finally, receptacle replacement. We were able to complete that project in a quicker timeframe than we had imagined. We added, we also added signage, the recycle right signage, we added those to all of the shelters. None of our peers were doing that, because we actually drove around and took a look see to see what the other towns were doing. So we're really proud of that. We were seeing a lot of contamination at the shelters, and so that was a good way for us to try to drive that message home, so we added the recycle right messaging there. You would, you'll see it, you've seen it here, it's in the kitchen, it's in every facility across town, as well as our shelters, because we want to have a consistent message. We also added landfill stickers to our trash cans. Thank you. So that messaging was very clear to folks when they put something in the trash. What does trash mean, right? Oh, it's going to a landfill. And landfills fill up, as they are in Wake County, so we're trying to make sure that folks understand that when they put something in the trash, to make sure it's truly trash. Moving on to fiscal year '24. You will see orange at the top of this page for the sustainable purchasing guidelines. That was an item that was delayed, but we were able to complete, that was supposed to happen in fiscal year '23, we were able to complete it in fiscal year '24. That was in large part due to the waste and recycling subgroup as part of the STF. I'm gonna just refer to them as the STF from now on, the Sustainability Task Force, just to save time. We actually pulled in a couple of additional folks on that, too, some folks from budget and finance that had a particular interest. And these wonderful cups in front of you are a great example of you being examples, right, for how we can no longer, you know, let's get away from that single-use plastic water bottles that we've been using, and we can all do this. Council's doing it, and staff can do it, right? And so we're really proud of that, so thank you for your help with that effort. We were able to determine the eligibility for the Tree City designation. You had to reach a per capita expenditure, and we met that, we met that threshold, so we're happy about that. The Public Works team was specifically involved in that particular effort. You'll see the green for implementation of EV infrastructure. So since we already had that assessment that was done by North Carolina State University's Clean Energy Technology Center, we had that to go with, but we also have been working closely with our capital projects teams to identify where does it make sense for us to put EV infrastructure in for new, for new facilities, right, for new buildings. And we also have, obviously, our Unified Development Ordinance now that requires it based on a certain number of parking spaces and the use of the facility. So those are things that we're very much keeping in mind as we think about new EVs, EV infrastructure. And then finally, the evaluate opportunities to, for developer incentives to increase and/or save the tree canopy. Based, we were able to, you know, put forward the new planning was, able to put forward the new tree preservation rules back in 2020, June of 2023, and we're using this time to, to see what happens from those new regulations before we look at what are the developer incentives that we might look at for future. So we'd like to assess where we're at right now with new projects that have been, that have been required to use those new tree preservation guidelines before we make any future steps, but I will assure you that we have had discussions with planning to talk about what might it look like to require, not require, sorry, to evaluate incentives for developers to save the tree canopy. Fiscal year '25. Implement solar. We're doing that again. So based on the Congressional Directed Spending Program that came from Congresswoman Deborah Ross's office, right, that's a $250,000 match, that's a grant, and we're matching it with $250,000 to put $500,000 worth of solar on town facilities. That is something that we're, we have been approved by receiving BABA waivers. BABA is a Buy America, Build America waiver, because no one in the United States was making, we were not domestically producing solar panels that could give us the productivity that we needed. And so the DOE just had that approved in January, so that project is all systems go. We're anticipating putting solar on the Connector Building, which would finish out the campus of the town, so I think that's a really nice visual way for us to show our commitment, dedication to sustainability and renewable energy specifically. We're also looking at putting solar on the MAFC rooftop, as well as putting solar canopies in the MAFC parking lot. We use a lot of electricity at MAFC, a lot of natural gas, so we are always looking for ways to mitigate that at that facility. Developer implemented food waste pilot project, so that was new, if you remember correctly. I know this is many years ago now, but when we had the stakeholder engagement with you all, you had said food waste was your number one concern, and I think the team was able to kind of come back to that and kind of say, how can we, what is a way that we can push this effort forward, right, without spending a ton of dollars, but will have an incredible impact? And so we've been able to do that with our food waste, and we're gonna talk about that a little bit more at the end. I've got some new numbers for you. Our fire stations are doing collections, as are, we have three community carts as And the waste and recycling subgroup is part of the STF, was part of that initiative. Tree City designation, we have been approved regionally for the Tree City designation. We just learned that a couple of weeks ago. It is now at the national level. The National Arbor Day Foundation is the organization that approves, so we are waiting word on whether we've been approved for that. Canopy implementation plan per Wake County land cover and tree canopy assessment. If you remember correctly, a few years ago, Wake County did an extensive study using ARPA funds. We're still utilizing that data and those priorities to help us define and identify where can we put trees, both not only on public property, but also on private property. So when we think about vulnerabilities like heat island mitigation, stormwater, social equity, we are going to do a new plan to help us actually put trees in the ground, and so we're really excited about that. We have a grant that we were just awarded from the North Carolina Forest Service for about $32,000, and that's a 50% match that we will be matching to do that project. And then finally, research proposed and implement green building standards for town projects. This is work that we've been doing with our capital projects team, and we've been able to assess the viability of various opportunities, right, to bring in more green building standards. We have a number of them in our Public Works Standards Document that we send out to all design-build firms that work with us, and so we've really, that is an opportunity for us to learn and to see where we can push for more or where we need to back away a little bit. Sorry. And that was the built environment subgroup that was a major part of that particular effort. Okay, let's talk about solar. We're talking about lifetime solar here. So on the far left, you'll see that we have FS1 went in, was commissioned in 2021, PSMS was commissioned in January of 2023, and FS3 was commissioned in August of 2023 as well. 2023 was a big year for solar in the town of Morrisville. So I wanted to provide you some solar generation numbers. These are kilowatt hours, so those are lifetime totals, so since the beginning when that project was actually commissioned. That's the first column. So we have generated all told about 467,000 kilowatt hours in solar generation. That is including about 2,200 KWH from Town Hall. Town Hall has only been active probably, I think it was late December that that project actually came online. So more to come on Town Hall Solar. You'll see the next column is solar generation KWH, which is an average by month, and so that just helps break it down for you to see how much are we actually producing on a monthly basis. We're producing about 20,000 KWH in solar. So the consumed KWH, what does that mean? So we're generating solar KWH in the first column, right? That third column is how much of that are we actually using, right? And then that final column is estimated savings. That's what we're getting credit for from Duke Energy, so that's what we're putting back on the grid, and then they give us, it's called net metering. They give us a net metering amount that comes back to us, so that savings amounts to about $17,000 total. Now, these projects are very early on in their stages, right, so they will continue to bring in those kinds of revenues as we push forward here. Just to give you an idea, so that's 184 metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions that we've been able to save, which is equivalent to about 38 homes' electricity use for one year. Okay, let's jump into some budget overview numbers. We have, as you are probably aware, we have a $200,000 base budget. This is specific to fiscal year '25, of course. We have a rollover which includes encumbered funds for the CDSP, the Congressional Directed Spending with Deborah Ross's office. So we encumbered $250,000 as part of that because we were hoping to, that project would come through and push forward. The actual projects that we've done are Town Hall Solar, which we've talked about. We did use sustainability funds for that. We did not use the congressional funds. The reason is because we could not use the congressional funds because we didn't have approval for, from the BABA waivers, which is the domestic content. And we did that because we wanted to take advantage of the Duke Energy nonprofit rebate, which was $37,500. So we went ahead and used our own funds so that we wouldn't miss out on that rebate. Duke Energy had been saving that rebate aside for us since December of 2022, so we can thank Duke Energy for that, for graciously holding that for us. The canopy cover implementation plan that I referenced is going to be about 64,000. The match 50% comes from, of course, the North Carolina Forest Service, the other half comes from the sustainability budget. The food waste pilot was, so this is the way this breaks down. So we have three carts at each of our, we have one cart at each of our fire stations, right? And then we have three community carts. We have one at Northwest Park, one at MCP, Morrisville Community Park, and one at the Southern Lotte Church Street. So this includes tipping fees, and this also includes their, they have, if you've not seen them, they have a really nice branded metal container that goes over the 65-gallon container. So that was, there was a cost involved in that, that was a first cost, and so from here on out, we'll only have the tipping fees to pay for, but that $30,000 is what we'll be using that money for. And then finally, we have sort of a catch-all budget bucket, which includes things like Green Day expenses, it includes program giveaways. We have a new MAFC Energy and Water Conservation Campaign, which I'm really excited to roll out, that's probably going to roll out in February, where we're working with Kendall and her team to design decals and mockups that will remind folks that we have a carbon footprint and how to measure their carbon footprint and what kinds of things they can do, both at the center but also at home, to reduce their utility bills and also potentially reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. So that total remaining is about $223,000. Let's segue to budget overview for grants. And I know this is a lot of information, so I hope, I hope you have questions. Great. Okay. So for grants, so this is again from the inception of the program. We were able to bring in a NCD EQ grant of $10,000 toward the, we did a lot with our recycle right program. We sent that to each of our residents, right? We made them into stickers, and then we made them into magnets, and so we were able to get some help from our friends at DEQ for that effort. We have talked a lot about the Congressional Directed Spending. I think we're pretty clear on that. We were able to also get a grant from the NCD EQ for the Volkswagen Settlement Mitigation Funds, so that, those funds helped us get chargers at MCP and also the chargers out front here at Town Hall, so that was a 50% match. And then finally, of course, the North Carolina Forest Service Canopy Cover Implementation Plan, which we're starting on now, which is about 32,000 from the town and 32,000 from the Forest Service. And moving to rebates, we've got a lot more of those. And you'll see Duke Energy on most of the list here. So we've talked a lot about the Duke Energy nonprofit rebate, so we were able to get that rebate for, actually for FS1, for FS3, and PSMS, which is significant. That rebate is no longer available, they stopped the program in December of 2022, but we really did leverage those funds as much as we possibly could. We also got the audit support from Duke Energy for 20,000. And then we were also able to, this kind of hearkens back to the, the green building standards, we were able to get through Duke Energy, they have a contract with a company called Wildan, and they provide energy design assistance, and so they actually help you map out the equipment, and it's very, it's highly efficient equipment, it's very optimized. So they made recommendations for FS3 so that it could be as optimized as possible. What they also do, that $13,599, they make sure that you get the rebates for the equipment that you put in that facility, and so that comes back, all of these come back to the sustainability budget specifically. I mentioned the Duke Energy nonprofit, Town Hall Solar. We actually just got that check on Tuesday, so really happy about that. That should actually be in the green, in the green line. And then, of course, we are waiting right now on the federal elective pay. That's the 30% that we're expecting from the federal government that will go back to the sustainability program as well, and that's about $98,000 total. So total received, 170,000 plus 37.5, and then that total expected would obviously be that 135 minus the 37.5. I just wanted to touch on the MSP goals and status, just so we're all very clear on where we stand, and I think we're in And I think we're in really decent shape. So you'll see the 2019 baseline. So that's when we, when I first came on board and we did the energy consumption baseline, we used 2019 as our base. So everything we do from here on out, we refer back to the 2019 baseline. So if you look at, we used about 2.1 million KWH in 2019. Based on our baseline, we are negative 2.4%. I do want to mention that we are truly trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison. We are not including new facilities like MCP3, like Fire Administration, like FS3. We are really, truly trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison. Of course, the solar generation, this was, this chart was put together in September. We've already, we are now at 100% of that goal for solar. We reached it a year early. We are at 245 KW worth of solar when we were hoping just to do 200. So really something that the town should be proud of. Reduced gasoline consumption by 20% by 2026. You'll see that we're trending upward here. And a large reason for that is because we had two years that we were unable to get hybrid vehicles based on supply chain issues from the pandemic, which is something that no one could really see in advance. And so we are collectively looking for ways to further reduce gasoline consumption. And then finally, the greenhouse gas emissions, we want to reduce those by 5% by 2026. We're at negative 3.7% based on our 2019 baseline. So we are doing exceptionally well, even with the increase in gasoline that we're experiencing Also important to note, EV charging increased by almost 100,000 KWH from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24. And it was brought to my attention recently that council has an interest in seeing sort of an overall return on investment for all sustainability efforts when looking at how much we've spent in grants and incentives and budget. And so that's something we'll be working on probably in time to release for budget. We just need a little bit of time to pull that together. And now we're moving to notable highlights. So we have significant pollinator efforts, right? And that goes hand in hand with our native plant goal that we have for the town. One of those efforts is the Monarch Pledge, which we've been a part of since 2021. I'm currently working with our natural environment subgroup within the STF to identify what can we do, what can we comfortably commit to that pushes us a little bit, right? But also what is attainable for the commitments that we can make to that pledge? As you know, we also have two hives. We have two apiaries at Fire Station 3. And so that's another way, obviously, for us to demonstrate our pollinator commitment. We have expanded EV charging access. How did we do that? We did that by instituting or integrating a dwell fee. And so residents are still able to charge for free for the first three hours and 15 minutes of their stay, after which time they are charged a $10 per hour dwell fee, up to $100. And that, I can tell you, that program is working very well because folks are now moving their cars so that others can have a chance to, to, to charge. Water bottle filling stations. Our Public Works team noticed that we didn't have filling stations in all of our parks, and so we rectified that. We fixed it. So we put in filling stations where there weren't any. And also, in addition, there are members of our team and Public Works who actually created, I'm not sure if anyone had seen them, but for events, we have water bottle filling stations that are mobile. And so they have got a really pretty flag that comes up off the top of them, so they're easily identifiable. And those are used for big events like Spring Fest and July 4th and things of that sort. So, you know, we're doing it within the town, right? To make sure that we're reducing single-use plastic, but we also want to kind of put that message out to our residents as well. The food waste pilot, so I thought I'd just talk real briefly about what we've already been able to divert. We've been able to divert 627 pounds of food waste from our fire stations. I'm not sure if Chief Dooley is still here, but thank you, Chief Dooley, for your leadership on that. And the parks, now the parks just started in December. The fire station started in October. So the parks have really only been operational three weeks. So they have brought in about 216 pounds for a total emissions of 2,300 pounds of greenhouse gas emissions. So it's really, I think with the more promotion and more folks that find these stations, I think that they will be used on a regular basis. They are app-controlled. So what that means is we don't have to have someone who's there physically to make sure that we're not contaminating those food waste collections, which is really very progressive. We are the first in Wake County to install these community carts. And so I think that's also something to really pat ourselves on the back for. Green waste diversion, Green Day, sorry, Green Day waste diversion, I wanted to talk about that briefly. This is from 2021. We've been able to divert, we collect all of these various things, right? Medication textiles, e-recycling, which is huge, 8,000 pounds of e-recycling, 240 gallons of cooking oil. Just so you know, we do collect cooking oil at Green Day, but we also have a station at Public Works that folks can drop off their cooking oil 24/7. It's always accessible. And so we have both of those opportunities for folks to bring us their fogs, as we like to call them. We've collected about 7,000 pounds of batteries. And mind you, we just started collecting batteries and CFLs just about a year and a half ago. So we haven't been collecting those that long. We're already, we've collected that amount, so it's really impressive. And then we've shredded about 26,000 pounds of paper for our residents. So all told, we're at about 18,000 pounds diverted from the landfill by doing these two Green Day events every, we do it in the spring and the fall. And I know many of you know that because you come and visit us, and we appreciate that. Those are really fun events to be a part of. Residents often will roll down their windows and thank us for that amazing resource. So thank you for your support of Green Day. And I am happy to field any questions that you have. Oh, that'd be great, if you don't mind. Thank you.
I think I saw Councilmember Fender. Your's up too, though. Councilmember Charles Johnson. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fender.
Thank you. And thank you, Kimberly, for this presentation. You've done a lot. And how many years have you been with the town?
Four. It'll be five this November.
Wow. So you have done a lot in a very short period of time. I remember four or five, I guess, five years ago, when during a roundtable discussion, I introduced the concept of solar panels on Fire Station Number One. And I, people looked at me like I had two heads, speaking Swahili or something. So I'm very grateful to see how far we've come. So I do have a lot of questions, so buckle up. I'd like to remind the town council of all the times I pass on council comments. So let's see, where did I? So I was curious about on fiscal year '24, evaluating the opportunities for developments incentives and the Save This Tree Canopy. So yeah, you mentioned our new, well, not so new anymore, but the changes we made to the UDO and wanting to assess where we're at before implementing any other, other changes. So I'm just curious to know, how are you going to assess or do you know what the feedback has been from developers?
I can't speak to the feedback from the developers directly. I think what we'd like to do is identify what projects have been done as a result of the new tree preservation rules, and then do some compare and contrast to what would that have looked like with the prior UDO rules. We know it's going to be an improvement. We already know that. What degree of improvement are we looking at? And do we define that or do we, do we identify that as being enough, right? Could we push, could we push the envelope a little bit more on developer incentives?
Okay. One of the questions I had was, so on the solar, in fiscal year '25, we say implementing, the implementation of the solar goal was delayed due to the, by America Build America. But then in fiscal year '25, we say it's advanced. But I know we were delayed in implementing solar on the Aquatics and Fitness Center. And I'm glad to hear that you guys have gotten waivers for that.
Sorry, just to clarify, Councilmember Fender, are you referring to the implement solar in fiscal year '25?
Yes.
So that was originally, when we first did the MSP timeline, that was from, that was in '26. So we, we advanced it a year based on having the funding from Ross's office.
Okay. So what is this timeline for solar on MAFC now?
I'm so glad you asked. So we had a meeting with DOE last week, and what they would like for us to do is to have the contract finalized and have the developer identified by, well, actually, let me retract that. They would like the contract with DOE to be solidified by April, April 1. That project, the entire project, would more than likely go through June of 2027. We're awaiting confirmation from them on that, but at this point, that's what it's looking like for a timeframe.
So that's not even June 2026. You're saying June 2027?
This, right, it could go that far more. We'd like to make sure that we have budget allocation because we have to front all of the funding for the projects, and then it's a reimbursement program. So we'd like to make sure that we can allocate correctly. So we're trying to buy ourselves a little bit of time in case we need to do that over two fiscal years. I welcome you to comment, Mr. Fender.
Thank you, Kimberly. Yeah, just for clarification, as Kimberly stated in her presentation, at MAFC, we're looking at solar on rooftop as well as in the parking lot, as far as solar canopies there. So what we may end up having to do is to phase that project and do our solar rooftops first. So we would do the connector building at MAFC as one project, and then come back as a Phase Two, as a second project, and do the solar canopies. We're now trying to get clarification, as Kimberly said, on the timeline, as far as when the funding has to be spent, because we'd like to be able to stretch that over two fiscal years if possible. But, you know, based on the timeline that we have to spend the money, we're still trying to get clarification on that because we were held up for so long, we don't know when that timeline is actually, it's got to be done by.
Right, because we got that grant two years ago. And we're, we still, we haven't spent it. So I'm just, I'm disappointed to hear that timeline being so drawn out. I hope that the roof solar could be implemented, like you're saying, Phase One, and much sooner than that.
Yeah, it is certainly, if we have that flexibility to do so, and working with Department of Energy and they give us that flexibility, that's most likely what we'd like to do. You know, it would be ideal to try to group them all together under one project. It'd be less, as far as administrative work for processing from a grant standpoint, to have one contract versus multiple contracts. But, you know, again, we understand urgency, and we want to get it done as soon as possible as well. So we may have to work through a process of get our canopies, you know, because it's a little different process than a rooftop. It's pretty straightforward. Canopies are going to, it's kind of, it'll be our first ones here in the town, so we have to navigate that process. So we won't want to hold up our rooftop solar as we navigate through that.
I mean, how much would you, more would you need in the budget to not have to span it over two fiscal years?
I mean, I think we're certainly working with the Budget Office on that as far as recognizing those grant funding. So I'm not saying it can't be done. So, you know, we're still trying to find out that timeline from DOE. And then once we know that, we'll be able to tell you what that looks like, you know. Ideally, we'd like to do it as one project. But again, we're not going to hold up solar on the rooftops if we still have to go through a process of navigating the solar canopies in the parking lot, making sure it meets, you know, all of our UDO requirements and different aspects of that, as far as technical specifications that we'd have to have to be able to bid the project. So we won't, you know, we won't hold up solar, rooftop solar on that account. So that, that would still allow us to move forward. But we still may not change that timeline. And we still might be able to still do it in two projects, but it's still, you know, the ones in the parking lot will come, you know, right on the tail end of the rooftop.
It just seems like we waited two years to get these waivers, which the whole point of that infrastructure bill was to invest in US-made solar equipment. And I know there are companies out there that make, not just make solar panels, but make the inverters as well, which would count toward that percentage. So I just don't think we're putting, this is just my comment, not to anyone in particular, it just doesn't seem like we're putting enough emphasis on this project. We received $250,000 from Deborah Ross's office two years ago, and then we've been dilly-dallying around, waiting for these waivers, and now you're telling me it still may not be completed until two more years.
I understand your frustration. I can assure you, we are as frustrated as you are that we were held up. We bid the project for solar on Town Hall and MAFC in October of '23, as when, and we had a contract ready to go. And that's when they said, hold up, you've got a BABA requirement that, so you can't move forward. So we were dead in the water until literally two and a half weeks ago, when we got word from DOE that that waiver requirement for the solar panels itself was approved. We were not the only project that's been held up. I mean, there's, if you go on and information to the DOE website, there's probably closer to 400 projects that have been waiting for this waiver requirement. They do produce solar panels in the US, but not to the magnitude that we would need to have to capture them from a commercial standpoint. And then there are inverters, so the waiver itself is for solar panels, but there is, the inverters or fasteners that are US-made, so we will be using those products for the solar.
All right. So question I had on solar panel lifetime slide. So you said the $17,000 was savings because it's a credit. It's generated electricity that was essentially sold back to the grid?
Correct, yes.
What about, I mean, wouldn't you have received savings for the solar generation What about, I mean, wouldn't you have received savings for the solar generation that was consumed? Because you're not purchasing it from Duke Energy? You're generate, it's self-generated?
No. So you will only, you will only be credited for what you put back on the grid. We still need to use that electricity, whether it comes from solar or it comes from Duke. We still need to utilize, we still need access to that electricity, right? But we're only being credited for what we put back on the grid.
But the, the solar or the energy that you're using that's generated from your solar panels, you're not purchasing that from Duke. You would otherwise be paying Duke for that. So that difference would be a savings in addition to the credit. I just think you're selling yourself short by this calculation.
We can go back and look at the numbers, uh, with our utility tracking software in Pira. Uh, but we had their help in creating this chart. So, but we can go back and look at that with a finer tooth comb, if you'd like.
I, I certainly understand what you're, what you're asking. And so certainly, as Kimberly mentioned earlier, when we do a kind of an overview, uh, budgetary wise for the sustainability program, uh, we'll, we'll factor that into that and, and provide that information once we have a clarity on that. But I certainly understand the questions you're asking.
Okay. Yeah, it just seems pretty small. Um, so your solar canopies, are they going to be similar to what Southern Energy Management is? The Haven Solar Canopies?
No, I don't think so. You're referring to the picnic tables, right?
Yes.
Which are wonderful, but no. Uh, so what we're envisioning, and we're still looking at aesthetically, what, what we'd like to, to have based on U D O requirements and height requirements and, and wind thresholds and things of that sort. Uh, but we're envisioning a cantilevered system?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, I, um, I commend you for looking at other opportunities of where we can install solar panels, like in parking lots, so to provide shade at the same, for cars at the same time as producing electricity.
Thank you.
Um, a couple more questions. One was, um, do you know the number of hybrid and, um, electric vehicles the town currently has in its fleet?
Uh, we have no, uh, fully E V vehicles in the fleet. We have hybrid vehicles. So I think, uh, prior to our last round of purchasing, I think it was, uh, I want to say it was 13, uh, Ford, uh, police interceptor vehicles that were hybrid. And we purchased five this fiscal year. So I think, I think 18 is roughly the number we have.
Okay.
As Kimberly noted before, we had two years, we were unable to purchase hybrid vehicles based on the, as you noted, the supply and demand was, you know, we, we had orders that got canceled and then got canceled again. So it was.
Yep.
And we had to go, based on the, the need of vehicles for police as far as replacement vehicles. You know, we had to purchase, um, gasoline engines for those replacements those two years.
Yeah, I'm aware of that challenge. Um, so I guess my last question that I would leave you with is what more can we do? I mean, I, I see our budget from last year was $200,000 plus the amount for, um, that we've received with grants and rebates. So we're actually doing a lot more than the $200,000. But I'd also like to remember, remind the council that $200,000 is the same amount, if not less, the amount of money we're spending on an engineering study to determine what improvements we can do for Cricket on the Church Street Park. So $200,000 to ensure that we have clean air and clean water and trees in our, um, municipality is relative, relative to the amount of other dollars we spend is pretty small. And so I'd like, I'd like to know, like, what more we could be doing that we're not now. You know, we're not, you know, having clean air and clean water is not, uh, nice to have or, uh, you know, something that is second thought. It should be our first thought and we really should start placing more emphasis on sustainability than what we do now. I mean, granted, we've made a huge change just in four or five years. But I still believe that there is more that we can be doing if we benchmark ourselves against, for example, Boone where we're headed, um, this weekend. So is there more we can do with public works vehicles and equipment? Um, what else?
I would say that anytime we look at equipment replacement, uh, we're looking from a sustainability standpoint. You know, we look, uh, whether it's for vehicles, obviously it's hybrid. Uh, and once we have an opportunity, we'll, we'll replace, uh, a non-take-home vehicle with a fully electric vehicle. You know, we're looking for that opportunity once we get to that point. But for, in public works, for instance, our gasoline engine, uh, mowers, you know, we just, uh, this fiscal year, we bought two E V mowers. And then as we replace our gasoline, uh, mowers, there'll be, uh, placement, uh, units will be electric mowers. And all of our handheld equipment, uh, as we buy new is, uh, electric and not gasoline. So we, we're taking advantage of those opportunities as they present themselves. Uh, you know, as far as overall, uh, we're following the, the master sustainability plan that was adopted by council. I mean, obviously if, if council has a, a desire to modify that plan and, and as far as to, to try to do more, uh, we'll, we'll try to, to do that. But again, it's, uh, it's just not fun. And this also comes with, you know, from a resource standpoint, is having the capacity to do the work.
Right. And I, I think we do need to relook at that master sustainability plan because when it was passed, I made the comment then that, you know, it was an elongated timeline. And I asked Kimberly, you know, what would it take to pull these items forward? And it was resources and, uh, staff. So when are we gonna look at adding even a part-time sustainability person to help with everything that Kimberly is doing? I mean, because we say, you know, so, I mean, we keep going back to, I hear you and Brandon say, well, we're going back to the masters, we're, we're doing this according to master sustainability plan. Well, the master sustainability plan was created based on only, uh, one resource. So it's limited. It's already constrained. So either we need to look at redoing that plan, increasing the budget, or both.
All right.
Uh, I'm going to keep talking as long as I need to, given the amount of time. I have to listen to all the other council members speak. When, any other time I comment on anything, I keep my comments direct and to the point. This is the one time in a year that I am talking more than I usually do. So, sorry.
I, I would just say that, uh, I, I understand your desire to, to move things along quicker. Uh, but, you know, we, we follow the plan in place. That was adopted by council. If the, the council as a whole wants to take a look at that and direct staff to do so, then we can come back and, and look at that and, and see what that looks like. But, you know, as a, as we manage the plan, you know, we also manage resources of, for the department. And so, you know, sustainability is just one component of public works that I have to look at and, and allocate the amount of staffing that's needed to make sure that we're providing the quality of services that the residents here have come to expect. You know, as we continue to grow infrastructure, amenities, that, that also takes resources, uh, out of our department that's needed to make sure that we can maintain those facilities. So it's a, it's a balance for me to look at. Um, so, you know, unless there's a, you know, desire from council to direct staff to go and look at the master sustainability plan. Because you're right, it was programmed to have one staff person leading those efforts. But as Kimberly alluded to tonight during her presentation, she's not doing this by herself. You know, uh, the Sustainability Task Force is made up of members throughout the entire, uh, departments throughout the town. And then we, we support with other staffing, with the efforts that she's leading in sustainability. So it is more than just one person. But the program, as you decide, as you already stated, was built on one person at the time. And that was the, you know, way it was set up. And that's the, the plan that we're following because that's council's adopted plan. Again, that if council has, uh, a desire to change that and, you know, direct staff to do, to, to bring options to, then that's certainly something we can take a look at.
Okay. Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you mentioned some of that in the Environmental Stormwater Committee meeting a while back, so, um, very thoughtful response. Uh, Councilmember Swaggin Johnson, please.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations. This was a very comprehensive presentation. Very well done. And you have knocked it out of the park. I mean, the amount of work that has happened in the short time since you've joined the town is phenomenal. And the sustainability plan has been well curated and executed. I'm a project manager professionally and I know you are sticking to that plan. I see the results. Some of the things that you're reporting on are very difficult to quantify. But yet I'm going to ask you to in a couple minutes. The plan is calling for certain measures that relate a lot to solar. And we're looking also at tree canopy. And, um, I always think about water and clean air. So measuring water is something that we do in maybe another department with our stormwater. Um, and I know that you would coordinate with that group, you know, she doesn't do everything by herself. But seeing more measuring of water and air, it's not always going to be a direct measure because that's really hard to do. But indirect measures might be helpful to know in the future. Number of trees, direct measure. There's an offset. There's a carbon, you know, cleaning that goes on with trees and so forth like that. So overall, I'd like to say I'm really pleased to see how on track we are with the sustainability plan that we have in place. In fact, I noticed on several occasions, you've advanced, use the word advanced. And what I understood it to be is that you advanced some of those deliverables that were set for, um, later years into the current year. And so that is like an exceptional, um, achievement because we, we kind of baselined it and we were able to maximize our citizen advisory committee to help support that. And also through the grant program. And I have a couple of questions about the grants. So overall, I just thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the kind words.
The grants are essential to the success of maximizing the town dollars. Are there grants that you've displayed here? What I, I see when they were granted, but what I don't understand, that might be a helpful point of data, is understanding when they expire or when they have been exhausted. Because that will tell me how the cash flow for the town money is going to be needed to supplement maybe some of the costs of future programming. And that'll be for also the rebate section. Sometimes rebates are offered for a limited amount of years. I'm hoping the Duke Energy rebates that you mentioned in the next slide are just ever, everlasting kind of based on usage. I suspected, yes, that they might be sunset after a certain time. And better to know if the rebates are for like new installations and there's a rebate for five years, that might be an example of a possible rebate. So as we add different buildings, um, such as M A F C that you mentioned this evening, such as Town Hall that you mentioned this evening, those will each have a rebate, uh, schedule. And if that is true, and I'm, this is total hypothesis at this point. But if that is true, I do not see a benefit to the town of accelerating our solar program because we're going to hit a rebate cliff. If we kind of gradually install these over time, those rebates will continue to be had over that, you know, over some time. It's kind of like a smoothing curve in a way versus, um, we have rebates, we don't have rebates on any buildings. It's just a thought about how to budget and how to maximize, um, cash flow. Um, oh, I was looking at the solar panel program. And it does cost money to install, but that equipment should be depreciated over time. And that's part of your R O I calculation. And I just wanted to know the depreciation schedule for solar panels, is it five years? Is it longer? And then how, um, should we be planning on replacing panels as they are no longer, um, you know, useful? Their useful life has been exhausted because that's a cost consideration as well to this program. Um, I'm sorry. I have a cold. So I was wondering, um, how we can maximize our sustainability program with more grants. And I will be honest that I am concerned about the future of federal grants or, or the grant program for sustainability in the future as we transition into the next phase of our federal administration. And we need to be very, um, you know, cognizant of our carrying costs for our existing program and when we might need to, you know, um, add new solar panels when the old ones, you know, are no longer effective. And as we add new things to our program, where those, um, grant monies are, are they exhausted? When they will be exhausted and so forth. So I'm just wanting a little more careful detail about, you know, how that, um, replenishment of our budget, because we have matching funds and, and grant funds, is going. Yeah, I'm just really interested in seeing how that goes. And then, um, again, if you could provide that detail about the rebate expiration, that would be very helpful. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your questions. I'll start with the rebates. Just for clarity, those are one-time rebates. They are not recurring. So they're just, you know, as Kimberly, uh, mentioned in the presentation, Duke no longer is offering that rebate program. So that doesn't exist anymore unless they come up with a different program. So the rebate that we received for Town Hall of $37,500 on Tuesday, uh, right now is slated to be the last rebate that we'll receive from Duke Energy for solar. Great question on the R O I for depreciation schedule for solar panels. I do not have that information, but we can get that. As far as the life cycle for solar panels, uh, that's, uh, you know, 20 to 30 years as far as the life cycle of that. So, uh, yes, there will be a cost at some point in time in the future for town to replace those, uh, panels at some point. And, and so certainly, you know, to plan in for that ahead of time, it would be advantageous for the town to do so. As far as grant funding, we look at grant funding, you know, as grants come out. So we're not, uh, grant funding, you know, as grants come out. So we're not allocating certain amount or percentage of our budget on an annual basis for grants. So we just look at it as grants are available. Does it make sense for us to apply? What's the matching fund? Is it something that we can utilize? Do we qualify for it? So there's a lot of things that, and we have, remind you that we have a grants team internally that are looking at grant opportunities throughout for all departments. And we work very closely with them, Kimberly does, to identify grant opportunities. And they look at it collectively as a team, and what makes sense and what doesn't really make sense. Because there are grant opportunities out there that doesn't really, are advantageous for us to seek or to apply for. So, but we will get the information on the ROI. And if there's anything else I missed in your questions, circle me back and we can address those. Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. Really great presentation. Appreciate all of your work and progress that you've made. One quick question. I just was curious as to the process of the Sustainability Task Force. Does it meet like every quarter, twice a quarter, all the departments coming together to just address where there's opportunity?
Thank you for the question. We meet quarterly as a large group. And so everyone that's a member is invited to that meeting. It's about 21 to 22 folks from across the town. And then we have subgroups, and those groups meet every six weeks. And so those are based on, they're very, they're based on a focus area. So it could be energy and water, it could be transportation, it could be built environment. So they're doing both. They're meeting quarterly, and then they're meeting every six weeks.
Okay, then. And then we're also coordinating with our, and I guess I see segues and connections between our smart city efforts and our I O T efforts, just what we're doing with sustainability, with sensors and things like that. I was curious as to, like on this slide here, it shows, it shows, I'm sorry, it shows solar generation and estimated savings. Do we, maybe we already have the, do we have dashboards, like our smart city dashboards, when you go to the parks, you can have to look, is that something that we can visibly display to show the residents?
Quite possibly. We do, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I just thought that could be a good idea.
We do have that data on our open data portal for Fire Station One. We could certainly add it for Fire Station Three. So we do have dashboards and APIs for all of the projects that we have. It's just a question of which ones do we want to display and where.
Yeah, because I think having a visible display there would just kind of be nice to show the residents of Mooresville where we're saving, you know, where the data shows that we're saving, but also for the public, for them to see over the period of time. So just, just a suggestion, I'd like to see that. The final thought I have is that, you know, we're going to be talking during the retreat about with our new economic development director initiatives. And I do see a connection between our sustainability efforts and economic development. This, you know, organization, I know you've attended some of the events, the research triangle, green tech cluster, where they often bring in startups and companies that are solving problems of sustainability. So I think this would be a really great thing for Mooresville to be involved with in terms of seeing if there's more events we can do with Dr. Wark and her team, Deb Wark, I think is her name. You know, I mean, I can see, like even with Riot and some of the I O T, some of the, some of the startups that have come out of their accelerators are, like Greenstream, for example, which helped Mooresville on our stormwater, was actually the result of them coming and solving a problem and growing. So I think there's an economic development component to promoting these initiatives to these regional players. Because you're seeing a lot of just even like job creation in green tech with, you know, some of the things that came down last year with some of the big announcements with, you know, Ken Power and, I can't remember, there was a, there was a few other ones. And when the Secretary Granob came, we were there, and she was talking about that. So just wanted to throw that out there as something that we can think about. Never really connect sustainability with economic development, but I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I'll just say that, you know, we can certainly forge that partnership with Tiffany, our new economic development director, and see if there's opportunities for us to partner and see what that looks like. So it's a great idea. So thank you for that suggestion.
Did you have any further questions, sir? Okay. Councilmember Johnson, please.
Okay, I'm really worried about this mic because before when it blew up, I thought it was me, Bianca. So anyhow, great presentation, both of you. Thank you very much. And I'm going to echo what you've already heard. A lot of work, really good work done by a lot of people. So thank you for sharing, for sharing the accolades with a lot of folks because this is a team effort, and it goes across all departments and the whole town organization. So, but you're leading it up, Kimberly, so thank you for that. I've got a couple of questions, but mostly comments. First, when you, when you talked about evaluating the new rules as it comes to Tree Save with our U D O, thank you. That is fabulous, I think, to evaluate, are we doing it? Or what the difference is with the new versus the old is dead on. You know, just because we changed something, and you know, just because we changed something, we hope that it is going to lead to more success. And sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't. So to evaluate against the old rules is really welcomed. And then how we can tweak it moving forward, absolutely. So I just wanted to say thank you. Kudos to that. The Tree City, I want to make sure I understood. You said you applied for the designation, but we don't know yet. We're waiting to hear back.
That's correct. So we've been approved regionally. We're waiting for the National Arbor Day Foundation to give us the final yes. You may be a Tree City.
Okay, thank you. Because I started to write, we got it. And then I wrote down, oh, no, wait, I must have heard wrong. So thank you for that. Well, so, because that's one of those initiatives that we talked about years ago. We talked about Tree City designation, and we've never, just like with solar panels, we talked about solar panels years ago. If all of you that remember Tim Goss, who was here, I don't know if there's anybody left that remembers Tim in our, yes, you know, that's what we, we started up talking about solar panels back then. And of course, we needed somebody, well, I think everything happens in its time, you know, with the, with the advancements in technology on solar, and then of course, all the grant programs. And then, of course, having somebody who's really focused on it and doesn't have their time split, you know, in 12 different ways, you know, all things happen when, when the timing's right. So Tree City was one of those as well. So, so thank you. That's just a thank you for that. I was going to talk about the Duke Energy Program too for nonprofits and why it was stopped. But okay, well, you kind of, we beat that one up. And then lastly, when, we adopted this sustainability plan in 2021 with goals out to 26. So tell me when, remind me when we were supposed to reevaluate because something tells me we're heading into reevaluating a four-year adopt, or a five-year adopted plan.
So I believe on the timeline that you have, the full timeline, we are, we're planning to start looking at a community-wide greenhouse gas inventory, starting in 26, and contracting with a contractor to help us do that study, do that analysis in 27 is, I'm going by memory here. That is the intent at this time. A lot of towns, peer groups that I see, they solely focus internal, and that's what they do. So I think we need to have some conversations about, do we continue to just really have that internal focus? Or do we want to do things like Councilmember Rao suggested, right, where we're sort of shifting that focus and making sure we're lending our expertise to our businesses and industry and economic development. I don't know that we can do both with capacity as it stands right now.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Okay.
And just for clarity, if I'm not mistaken, I think the plan was adopted in June of 2022.
Oh, 2022.
Yes, ma'am. And then it had six years on the, built out on the timeline.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
But thank you. This is going to be a quick one. I agree, you've done an astounding amount of work. I really appreciate the items that you've been able especially to accelerate. So I heard that, you know, you're following the plan, and if we want to revisit the plan, I heard that whole thing, but you must have thought about, what would you do if the sky opened and another person fell out and you had a staff? What kinds of things, could you give us some examples of some specific programs or some specific things that you would do?
That's a great question. There are a lot of, I think, data analysis components that we could dive deeper into if we had support. I think we could also take more of a focus, an external focus, to engage more residents and even businesses and industry in sustainability. I think there's opportunities there. Community tree program, facilitating something like that, like Kerry's My Tree, Our Tree program, so that we can take these priorities that we already have from Wake County and our own studies and actually apply them and add canopy to, to our, not only our public land, but our private land as well.
Okay, that's great. And I just also wanted to highlight the work that you've done with the Environmental and Stormwater Committee. When I was at the meeting, I, they've been doing some amazing work, and I know that part of that is with your guidance and your support. And, you know, they, like, I think that the work they do with the kids where, you know, where the kids make posters about different environmental, environmental aspects, and, you know, all of that, I mean, it's hard to quantify. But, you know, I think teaching the next generation about environmental sustainability is really important. So I just wanted to call out the fact that, you know, the work that that committee does is also an arm of, in my opinion, an arm of your department. And, you know, I think that it'd be great to, you know, to really, I know you're doing a great job involving them and supporting their projects, but, you know, I think if you gave them, if we gave them really free rein, they would, I think they would come up with some things too. And, you know, so I just want to both highlight the fact that you're working with them and also that committee's doing a fantastic job.
Thank you for that mention.
Mayor Protem Garamella? Yeah, I'll make it very quick. I think everyone has already talked. And I was just keeping quiet and listening to it. And we have come a long way, and I really appreciate the, you and the department and the task force who has worked together. One thing I would also be interested, this is, all we are doing is the town initiative, but also I would like to see from a town residence point of view, what are we, you know, basically advising them to do? Just like, you know, you're showing the solar generation for just four, three places that we are saving almost 17,000. And Breckenridge has 1,140 homes, at least I know 200 homes have solar. So that's just an example of showing, there's so many all across the town. It would be good to, you know, somehow, I think the best way, you guys have the data, actually speaking, because they have to take a permit for you all, you know, to do it. So if we can grab that, it will really help to understand how many megawatts of solar is installed in Mooresville. That's all. Thank you.
So would that be the consultant you're talking about in 26, 27, that would do the whole town?
That was the initial idea, yes. It would be a community-wide greenhouse gas inventory.
Okay, so that would be a good place to get a baseline and work from. So I really liked the last two things I heard, which is more outward facing. I think you've done a wonderful job on the internal part, especially with a lot of help with the master sustainability team. So anything that we can do, I think that would be really worthwhile to make that outward because the town is just a fraction of the greenhouse gas creation.
Yes.
And the savings, potential savings. So as we see lots of things and climate things happening all over the world, we can do all, our small part by helping our residents be a part of the solution. So I'd very much be in favor of knowing, maybe having that be as part of the budget ask what we can do to help our residents contribute to our sustainability efforts. So I have a couple of questions. Tree City National Designation, it's out of your hands. Hopeful that it can be by Arbor Day, right? I see that we have on the calendar, we have an Arbor Day date, save the date. So that would be wonderful. Is there anything we can do to reach out to Congressman Ross or whoever makes that decision? That's just a nonprofit. That's not a federal.
Right, it's a federal nonprofit.
Okay, so anything they can do to help with that. Any chance of a tree archive somewhere in town at some point? There's been some discussions. I haven't heard that be on the radar for a while. And giving away saplings or something like that, that's something we've done in the past. I think there's a number of us who have gone to the different tree planting events. Those are always lovely to attend. The, just wanted to say, there are people in the community, businesses especially, who are doing green building standards. Mayor Protem Garamella and Councilmember Johnson were with me at Solvius yesterday, where they mentioned that they built to lead silver. So if there's any way to also track how many buildings we have that are LEED certified, anything we can do to, that could be some of the incentives that we push forward. I understand it's pretty burdensome, but if someone's willing to do it, anything that we can do to encourage that, I think would be really nice. You mentioned there's three food waste containers for the public and one at each of the fire stations. Is it possible the residents are allowed to use ones at fire stations that are closer? Or is that a security issue or something?
Correct.
Okay, just checking. There's an app called Jewelbug. I'm not sure if that's still existing. That's a few years ago. I'm not sure if you're aware of that. But that's something that everyone can do and just have on their phone. So that could be a way to touch more of our residents. Vivian Jones, the Mayor of Wake Forest, just mentioned that they just became a Bee City. Is that something that we're on our radar?
We have discussed Bee City in the past, yes. It does require its own advisory committee. Yes.
Can piggyback it on one of our others, or?
We could, we could look at that again. We could look at that again, since we are doing a lot of, a lot of different efforts in the pollinator space.
Yep, at the Bee downtown. When's the first time that we can all get dressed up in those white things and go over to Fire Station Three? Is that on the, in the plans?
Yeah, I think, yes, we should do that. Most definitely. Yeah.
They've done that at RTP a couple of times, which is really nice.
Yeah, it's really fun.
That'd be exciting. So it was kind of asked by Councilmember Finner, how much budget funds would you need to do canopies at the same time? Sounds like the U D O might be part of that timeline issue.
Correct, yes.
So understood. Thank you very much. I loved the answer. What more can we do? I loved your answer to Councilmember Robati. A lot's more outward facing, more analytics. I think using AI and things like that, and getting Morris on that could be really helpful, getting Rick Ralph making that stuff happen for us. So I'm less about the questions, more about the encouragement towards you and just the pride of everything that you've been able to do. You say it's a big team, and I appreciate your leadership in that space, and Jeffrey for your support of her and her efforts. I believe everyone's had a chance. I think, I recognize Councilmember Johnson who wants, I think, to share something else again? Not so much? Okay. Any final thoughts or questions? Okay, I think we're all very appreciative. You guys can have the last word.
Okay, Kimberly first.
I just wanted to say thank you for your dedication and commitment to the sustainability program overall. I love doing this work, as you know, and so I just really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight to highlight the work that's being done for sustainability. I want to say a huge thank you to Kimberly. She, you know, is humble, but she is the heart and soul of sustainability for our department, for our town. So kudos to you, Kimberly, and the work that you do. I would say just thank you to each one of you for your continued support of sustainability and public works. Thank you to senior leadership for continuing to support our efforts as well. And to answer Mayor Protem's question about how many homes have solar, there's been 232 building permits issued for solar since 2019 in the town. Two, 232? I'm not sure of that information, but we can certainly, I don't, I don't know what, how many kilowatts, Shandy?
Yeah. Piggyback on that was also the EV cars, you know, because on my street, I see every other car is an EV. I think at Mooresville, you see more than other areas. I think commercial, you see more than other areas, especially the West Coast area, I think, with the gas prices going up. It would also be good to, I don't know how you guys can do it because we pay taxes. Do we know how many, I don't know how to basically figure that out, how many are there in Morrisville that we, they pay taxes?
Can CDOT registration data, would be a way to get to that.
Yeah, because, you know, because they pay to Morrisville, right? Like the make or fee or whatever we pay on an annual basis. I think if there's a way to capture that, that would be really good.
Okay, we've got it noted.
What about commercial buildings with solar? I believe I know of two that Shandy helped me with a year ago. Didn't know if there are any more since then.
We can certainly look and bring that information back.
I think one was Sterling Montessori and another was Target. Yes, yes. Oh, Fifth Third. Yeah, Fifth Third. Yeah, I'd be interested to know how many commercial buildings have solar.
Sounds like we might be very interested in moving forward that townwide investigation because a lot of these would be answered by something like that.
Correct.
Yeah, the idea from Mayor Protem about kind of celebrating where we already are as an example of how to help us move forward might be a good thing to piggyback on. Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Great work, and thank you to the whole team, all 22 of y'all. Okay, at this time, at 7:33, we're scheduled for a 15-minute break, so when we come back at 7:49, please.
Thank you very much. We are back in session now. Now we're going to go on to fees and other revenues. I'll pass it to John Letney, Mary Focette, and Cindy King, and Billy Helton.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for this opportunity to continue our conversation about cost analysis. Tonight's scope is going to continue providing you that context relative to cost recovery. To do so, I'm returning to what the nationwide standard is for Parks and Recreation. And keep in mind that there are a lot of variances, and that is key to understanding that we're not talking apples to apples. I'll explain more on my next slide. Additionally, I will refresh your memory of the pyramid methodology, then I'll reintroduce you to the philosophy centered around classifying Parks and Recreation services that are from the existing fees and charges policy. I will conclude, discuss, and recommendations, and look forward to answering any questions you may have. So let's hold questions till the end. I hope that this slide looks familiar, as it was part of my July presentation. I brought it back this evening to further explain the variability where cost recovery from one's Parks Department to another, again, is not an apples to apples. Cost recovery by definition is a percent of expenses recoup through revenue. As you're processing this definition, let me give you a picture. Morrisville Parks and Recreation has a senior center, an aquatics and fitness center, a youth center, six playgrounds, et cetera. In contrast, Apex has a community center, a senior center, a cultural arts center, 12 parks. So you start to see So you start to see that there's difference. Our menu of facilities, parks, and programs differ, not only here in Wake County, but statewide and nationwide. Thus, there is a general practice for parks departments at year-end to take the revenue and divide it into expenses to see what percent of the budget was recovered, i.e. cost recovery of taking expenses divided into revenue. The national average, as you look at the purple bubble, is represented at 34%. Again, getting inside of that number, the departments are not equal. Therefore, looking at cost recovery and saying that it's a standard is a hard umbrella to put us all under. So it's a percentage to evaluate your allocated budget and your revenue. So as you start to look over to the blue bubble, this was a project of a graduate student working with Recreation Resources that attempted to dive deeper into cost recovery, looking across the state at municipal and county parks and recreations. However, their results were inconclusive. One, they didn't have a high respondent rate. And then two, as I've already mentioned, the variability across the departments and trying to answer that service, answer the survey when it didn't necessarily fit to each of the respondents or who was receiving it, the department heads. So some of them left questions unanswered. Therefore, you know that doesn't help with survey validity. But what was received, and just looking at the average cost recovery question, it was 21%. So below the national targeted at 34%. The orange bubble displays Mooresville's cost recovery, looking over the past four fiscal years. And so I did circle the 44% to help you understand that this number doesn't mean we're 10% above the average, because again, we don't know all those details of what comprises the data building up to the 34%. What we do know is that we recoup 44% of the budgeted funds in FY '24. Keep this in mind about the budget allocations and how that includes part salaries, full-time, part-time, supplies, travel and training, leases, et cetera. What it doesn't include are the budget allocations for public works, utilities, athletic maintenance, some miscellaneous maintenance that also is attributed to our functioning of our parks and recreation services. Before I get ahead of myself, let me advance to the next two slides. So this slide is a new slide. I wanted to show graphically expenditures to revenue for that cost recovery of 44%, and then just detail how the expenses are broken out operational and salaries, benefits, and leases. You're going to hear me in a moment on another slide talk about direct and indirect costs, so I'll come back to that. And then also the revenue, and then just showing in the orange that cost recovery, again, equation, revenue divided by expenses. I wanted to continue in this framework of the budgeted allocations for the department and show you that our revenue is comprised of, on the pie chart on the left, of three streams, revenue streams. The MAFC, daily usage, memberships, whether it's monthly or annual, that's all grouped into that 37% for MAFC. Then there's the programming, and there's also the rentals. So I want to focus in the context of programming. So I'm going really wide, really broad, budgeting. Now I'm starting to try to bring you in at a closer level of programming. So let me just hit that home. Tonight, I'm highlighting the programming stream to further convey to you how staff approaches setting fees. As we move in advance, we're talking about methodology. This slide should also look familiar to you. It too was in my July presentation. It's used to represent who benefits from park and recreation services and how fees are applied. At the base, there's a wide community benefit where there's little to no affiliated fees. This includes greenways, playgrounds, open spaces, and even special events. As we move up the pyramid, the benefits start to change, and there are fees are applied. For example, tier three represents an equal or balanced benefit across the community and the individual. Examples here include, but are not limited to athletics. Moving to the peak or to the top of the pyramid is where there's a mostly individual benefit or often specialized programming. For us, an example would be ready, set, go for our preschool program. This slide brings the imagery of an iceberg, where I want to start discussing direct and indirect costs. Of the 24 FY '24 budget, if you were to compartmentalize what of the budget went to direct expenditures and what went to indirect? 80% went to indirect, 20% went to direct. So looking above, where you see the tip of the iceberg, when you're talking direct costs, direct costs to programming. Whenever you pull out and you're talking about that community benefit, what the town has invested in for a parks and rec department, there's an 80% there that's unrelated to direct costs. So if you look underneath the water, the maintenance, the full-time staff salaries, contract to cleaning services, facility lease fees. Again, if we're just talking about the parks budget, of our allocations, 80% is equated to that indirect, where 20% is to the direct. So to better explain this, again, trying to bring it down, let me use an example of a program, Ties and Tieres, or a daddy-daughter dance. In order to execute the program, our programming staff has to take into account what does it take to put this on? The part-time staff who are going to be overseeing the safety, the excitement, all that's going in. Then there's going to be potentially decorations, food, et cetera. That's comprising the direct costs. We don't account for the full-time staff. So for example, if this is taking place at Cedar Fort Community Center, the full-time staff will be Quentin. We wouldn't take his salary into account. He's not there that evening. But the part-time staff who are there working would be part of that direct cost. You may think of the word overhead. What is the overhead for that program? So this graphic intends to show what we're trying to capture with the programming. Focus on working towards methodology to get that direct cost. Again, just keep in mind with cost recovery, there's a lot of variability that rolls up into what you're intending to recover. So as this picture of cost recovery is developing for you, a question now or in the future is, what percent of recovery is council comfortable with us setting? To help you arrive at this, let me continue to bring to light further structure of putting direct costs into perspective relative to programming classifications of service. Now you're going to be reintroduced, and I mentioned reintroduced because this is in our fees and charges policy that was approved, adopted in 2018, where there's a listing of three classifications of service, basic, enhanced, and specialized. Classification of service. The department balances cost-to-benefit ratio, providing services in a tiered structure, basic, enhanced, and specialized. In the basic bucket or column, this is where the costs to provide these facilities and services are largely borne by the general tax base. Again, zero to little percentage is deferred back to the participant. Enhanced, we're starting to move up to that middle part of the pyramid. The user shall share in the cost of receiving enhanced offering to offset tax dollar support. And then as you move up to the top of the pyramid, that's where you're starting to see that specialized programming. And then these types of services provide mostly exclusive benefit to the individuals or group. Thus, they're going to bear the majority of a fee or they're going to exceed in a higher cost recovery percentage. Let's return back to that example of Ties and Tieres and talk you through as if you're a programmer on my staff. So again, in that step one, when you're thinking all of these programs that you can bring to the table to put forward, you're thinking about what is the demand or the need from the community? Who has requested this program? How are we comparing this in the market? So those first couple of steps is when you're doing some research and discovery of thinking, what is it going to pull from the budget, that overhead, that direct cost? So again, this could range from decorations, food, staff, supplies, but that all builds to a total. Then the next phase is to evaluate, what is the minimum number of participants to run the program? And that is key. The minimum number of participants for running the program. And we may need to come back to this, and we'll be happy to, and Cindy will reinforce and answer any questions as well to clarify this. So we have our overhead, we have our minimum number of participants, and that rolls into our base cost per participant at that minimum number to either break even or to subsidize, or even to look to recover above and beyond for that program. And in that final step, is you take all that information and you start to calculate to understand where you are going to be with your fees. In addition to just saying this fee for residents is A, and the fee for non-residents is B, there's also to compare in the market, to make sure that where we're setting our program, we're not overpricing beyond the market and we're not underpricing. That there's value to the service that we're providing through our program. So as we've gone wide and then we've come back narrow, as I've mentioned and reintroduced, that some of you may not have been familiar. It may be like a first introduction to this classification of basic, enhanced, and specialized. As a recommendation, it's difficult to back in to where we were now at the beginning. So this is our 25th year of Mooresville Parks and Recreation. At the conception of athletics, that was built on the heels of providing athletics at little to no cost. Because it was just to do character development, it was to have engagement for well-being, camaraderie, teamwork, et cetera. And so it really started as part of the backbone of programming for our profession. Through the years, we started having competitors, the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club. And then today, the market is much more competitive, as you're very well aware of, of the private sector and higher-level competition. So we, as a profession, couldn't stay stagnant and continue to offer what the backbone and the bread and butter of our profession was at no cost. So athletics 25 years ago was more or less at the base of that pyramid. However, today, as we said, as I've already told you, it has moved up the pyramid to the middle. So it has that community and individual benefit. Therefore, there's a deferring of fees to the participant. And what you see presented on the screen at basic, zero to maybe 5% is what would be recovered for programming that falls as a basic classification. Enhanced, potentially 30. Specialized, 50. We're not married to any of these numbers. We look forward to hearing thoughts from you all. And we're not even at a point tonight to say, this is where we are with these numbers. Because cost recovery with all those variances, and again, where we're trying to back in, we need more data of developing new programs to really understand how it trends with the needs of the residents and how we are competitive with the selections that we're putting forth in the market. So just reading on down the slide, this framework assesses fees according to degree to which each service benefits the community, while also evaluating the extent to which the costs of providing these services are recovered. Again, what is our overhead? What is the cost for us of doing business of providing recreation programs? Also, something that you may not be aware of that I wanted to bring to light to is that the way our fees are structured from resident to non-resident, there's a differential of 30%. This is an average across the state. It's not uncommon to also see 50%. And it may not be uncommon to see above 50 or even below 30. Whenever I came to Mooresville, I noticed that we didn't have a structured differential. And so that was something that I worked with staff to implement so that we could show that there is skin in the game from our non-residents where our residents are part of that tax base that's feeding into our allocations of the budget. Also, top of mind is whenever we have opportunities for senior programming. And how does this structure of cost recovery apply to seniors? On the screen, I've detailed the five areas of programming currently offered, where Laura and Shawana have identified that their program menu falls underneath five categories, educational, fitness, game time, social, and trips. And you'll notice that educational, fitness, and game time are free. But even if I was to back up, and we were talking about this like as a unique or specialized facility, different from MAFC, seniors do not have to pay to come into the center. They come into the center, no fee. They can participate in these three areas of programming, no fees. Then we start to look at, again, applying that pyramid to what programming offerings there are, to where there is cost, and how we need to recoup that with that overhead. So socials, ice cream social, holiday lunch, they have been assessed a fee. Trips goes up the pyramid. It has that individual benefit versus the majority community benefit. So that one also has received a fee. So with this, there's also that framework that can be applied of basic, enhanced, and specialized. And we're looking for some parameters from council as we continue our path forward with cost recovery. Our next steps, confirm council's interest and continue to recover a percentage above direct costs as a means to recover a portion of the department's indirect costs. Let me pause here. Let's go back to where we started from where we were really broad. And if we're talking about just a percentage to recover of the parts allocations, where we've been at 44%, you may say, well, you know what? I really want to see, can we achieve 50? And what would that look like? Now, that is an end of a fiscal year measurement. It's not a beginning of the year measurement. So it's something that we're working to achieve. We don't know that we can be successful because we're making projections about revenue and where we're heading. But all of those, I believe it's 16 revenue codes that we have, build in to that potential success for whether it's 44% or 50%. Then there's also that tiering at the program level to where we can pace today and throughout the year as we're developing new programming. And that is where it parallels with basic, enhanced, and specialized. And where I just have a placeholder at zero for basic, 34 for enhanced, and 50 for specialized. And then as continuing with next steps, council will confirm the methodology for conducting cost analysis. And then, as you may or may not be aware of, it is time for us to ask for support to do a new master plan. And different from when the last time the department went through a master plan, a master plan now brings in a financial component that may also be able to lend some professional consulting advisement and support for evaluating cost recovery for us specific. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your patience. And I know that we went very broad and narrow, but that it gets complicated because of the nuances. So I have Cindy here. So I have Cindy here with her background in programming, and then Billy as our analyst, and of course, myself as your director. We're happy and excited to hear your questions. Before I open up the floor, I do want to recognize the core five of the seniors and managers who came this evening, that they are the ones with the hands and the boots on the ground that really work with the team to apply this methodology without having the structure and framework and bringing in their knowledge of the market to where they've been with setting fees, to where they are now with being on the cusp of receiving this structure in place. So I extend my gratitude to them and to you all and to senior leadership. So thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to have this conversation with you.
You very much appreciate you bringing this forward. I see Councilmember Robotti followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
So my first question just outs me as a data dork, but the, I don't really understand how, like, how the calculation of percentages can be all that complex. Because if you have, I mean, the more facilities you have and the more programming you offer, also the more staff you have, like, it seems like the costs would scale with the size of the program. So really, that should be, that percentage should be a fairly standard metric. Yeah, the national, I guess I'm talking about them all, you know, because, I mean, if you have, the bigger the program, the bigger the cost of the program, and the bigger the, the bigger the recovery. I mean, the more dollars you recover. So how is that not a standard metric across Parks and Rec?
We may have difference of opinions. I'll take a first stab at it, and then Cindy or Billy can chime in. It varies from community to community based on the demographics and the program offerings of where have they been and where are they going? So you're not wrong in that it's scalable, a hundred percent, you're correct. It's what is the expectation of recovery? So let's just take it very simple. If overhead, okay, overhead, if we're asked to recoup a hundred percent, then we're looking at that minimum participation dividing the overhead across all of those participants. However, there may be some departments that because of their target audience, that is too high, and it takes their fee, it outprices them. So then they start to reduce it. But then there may be other communities where it doesn't seem competitive because of the market. So then to look beyond overhead is where it starts to get tricky, and that's where that zero percent or thirty percent or fifty percent, if that is established, you're correct. It is easy and it is scalable. But if you don't have that percentage above overhead, or even to say below overhead of the ratio of subsidy and the fee structure, that can be challenging in trying to direct that fee structure. Is there anything else you want to add, Cindy?
No, I think, I think just the Just the variables in general are going to play a big part of it. Mary alluded more to the programming side, but when you start looking at the public works side of things, there may be a department that doesn't have a public works side and where as we may be putting those indirect, or we may not be putting those indirect public works fees into that forty, thirty-five, forty percent, another municipality may not. So it's, it's, there's many variables when it comes to the, the numbers game.
Okay, thanks. And the other question I have is, well, I guess this isn't a question, but you asked what we thought, so I'm going to tell you what I think, which is, I would way rather see us getting cost recovery by increasing the, the delta between the resident and the non-resident fee. So for example, you said it's thirty percent right now. I would rather see us go to forty percent there and not ever price a senior citizen or a child out of a public program. I think it's hard enough for people to afford, like, I think rec leagues now are the, the refuge of parents that just cannot do travel basketball, you know, travel baseball. And it's the last place you can go. And so I just think we need to be, I just think we need to be really careful. And the same thing about the senior citizens, like, I mean, you can say that the, you know, the trips or the events are just, you know, should be in maybe the highest category, but I fundamentally disagree. Because I think that if you have a healthy and thriving senior population that can go to events, that can go on trips, I just think it's good for them and it's good for the community. And I hope that's one of our values. I think that's one of our core values, you know, is we, I feel like we spend a lot of time trying to look out for people that might be getting marginalized. And so I feel really strongly about that. And the only other thing I want to say was that, that whoever thought of selling baseball shirts beyond the baseball community there, I bought a baseball shirt, somebody better invite me to a game, but I think that's a great idea. Like, that's, I
You are only not.
But I was, I was like, I thought that was a great idea when I got the email. And, you know, I think we should do more stuff like that.
Let me also paint another side of the coin. Uniquely in our area and actually trending for our profession is the demand has shifted from recreation athletics as being the first go-to. And so they're starting to, and maybe, and at the same time, travel has had this like pivot of, it doesn't always have to be out of state. It can be within a region. And so where that has started to encroach upon our profession is the expectation of parents, is that coaches are at a higher skill, where the backbone of athletics, and probably some of you I know have fulfilled these roles, they're volunteers. And so it's trending of having this expectation of higher skill. So some departments have actually had to shift in where they have to pay their coaches. And so the, the market and the trends have a lot to do with it, also with who are we servicing? Do you want to add anything?
I understand that, Mary, and I think that it's important to offer a high-quality competitive program. But I'm just saying that I think that when it comes to athletics, when it comes to seniors, I think athletic programming and senior programming is an absolute good. So the more that we can subsidize, subsidize that, recouping costs in other ways, like through a higher non-resident program fee, I would be happier with an approach like that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson followed by Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. I completely concur with Councilmember Robotti. We have seniors that are here that are vulnerable to price increases in our grocery stores, price increases in their taxes, price increases in their medical costs. They're able to enjoy our senior center, but I don't agree having a direct cost recovery of a hundred percent for the social events. The senior center is for senior socialization, which is part of the quality of life, mental and physical. What are we doing? We have lost that concept of what a senior center, the heart of it really is about that social engagement. Let's not punish them for wanting to participate. We're very good with the physical because we have no fees, but the social events, the fact that this year, we were going to charge a fee for Senior Day, I was appalled. I was embarrassed. And thankfully, the council agreed that that was something that we did not support. But I would like to take a step further and say, the social events, holiday, bingo, and so forth, we really should not do direct cost recovery. This is about their mental, social balance, and it's the purpose of a senior center. I would like to see no fees for these social events. There is possibly discussion, I think, that should be had about the non-residents, because I know, this is not in your presentation, but I would like to know the participation level of Mooresville residents to Cary residents or non-Mooresville residents. Because I think that might be giving us a metric that we are going to be a little bit surprised. And we need to have a conversation about potential senior programming and the center. If we're finding that we're having a lot of non-residents and we're looking at growing our center, then we, then there's a problem. Because we're, we're supposed to be providing that service to our residents, and if the majority of non-residents are pushing them out and making it crowded, how do we have that delicate conversation? The other thing is trips. I think we should subsidize trips. I'm not saying make them free, but I think trips are also a social engagement opportunity for our seniors, and it strengthens their social networks, and it also provides them with additional opportunities for education and experiences. So I would really like to see that modified. So I kind of went from here, down in the weeds, and now, see, I'm just kind of reflecting your style here a little bit. I wanted to go pull back a little bit to just talk about that percentage development of the cost recovery model that you've explained. Is forty-four percent, to me, sounds like a very aggressive cost recovery. And, and I'm not completely comfortable with it because I think maybe we're not giving our residents the value that they have and that we're pricing them out of some things that they might otherwise choose. So I need to dig into that a little bit to understand what that forty-four percent looks like. MAFC, you've highlighted, is one of the major areas where we do a lot of cost recovery. But the athletic programs, like Councilmember Robotti said, sometimes having the opportunity to participate in a sport where there's a lot of other bills is a great thing. And just because a lot of families or the trends are that they're traveling teams or competitive teams, what about the child that doesn't have a lot of opportunities in general? Having an athletic opportunity or a social group to participate with is where that government safety net is. And it has been for generations. I don't want to lose sight of that. Just because we're in a very prosperous area doesn't mean there's not need. So we need to look at that a little bit more closely. And then here's something that I was curious about. And it's a broad category, and I know it's complex, so I'm going to ask it anyways. What is the cost recovery for the cricket sport? So we've got many layers. We've got the field, we've got leagues that lease the field, we've got contracts for exclusive rights for some national activity. So I just want to understand how that model is working and, you know, if, is it, it's one of those areas that may be something we can tweak a little bit? I do like her ringtone, so she's going to share that with me later. But, you know, should we look at reducing our cost? Should we be looking at increasing the fees? I'd just like to dig into that a little bit because it just seems to be one of these mysterious areas that could be affecting the overall scoring of your cost recovery model as well. And then the other question I have is about town events. Some of our events are completely free, such as the fireworks every year in July. You can come and watch the fireworks, and the town provides fireworks and so forth. Sometimes there's, the smores are free, and then there's, and sometimes there's a, there was tickets that were sold for certain, like Spring Fest at one year. Maybe not every year, but there were some years where there was signups and tickets sold and so forth like that. So I'd just like to know a little bit more about the town events and what that cost recovery looks like. Is it all the same? Or are different events considered in a different way? You know, direct and indirect and so forth like that? And I think that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
If you want to respond to any of those at this time, or?
I will just respond as you've alluded to, more, more analysis is required, so there'll be, this is for future presentations, et cetera. From my notes, I didn't hear a question that I could respond to tonight. If I missed something, can you please correct me?
I do want to have a follow-up about the senior fees. We need a decision from council about whether or not we want the fee structure for social events and trips to be subsidized or, or zero. And I think we need to make that decision this weekend. I would love it for it to hear from you tonight to kind of give direction to our park staff.
So let me just level set that bingo is part of game time. That's not classified as a social. There's no fee assessed with bingo. It can be a little confusing because participants do come with money, but it's money in, money out. And so that's how they do the winnings. The socials, where there's a fee, is if there's an ice cream, a holiday, if there's a St. Patty's Day, if there's, you know, future, where there's a overhead above and beyond the daily menu of programming. And then you're correct about the trips, there's fees with that as well.
So if I, if I may, you keep on talking about overhead, but I think of those as more direct costs associated with those socials.
Correct.
And that's why there's more recovery there. So, thank you. Councilmember Johnson followed by Councilmember, for time, Gary Miller.
So, thank you, Mary, for being here. Thank you, everyone, for being here. So just, I want to make sure that I understand this. So when we talk about cost recovery, I mean, you could do a hundred percent cost recovery, but that will never get there because you just said we don't include public works and maintenance and, okay.
salaries, utilities.
Yep, 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 okay.
That's what makes it confusing as well.
Yeah.
Whenever you mention cost recovery as a broad comment, and then that's why I'm trying to bring it to a program, although even when we bring it to a program, there's that indirect, that if we're putting a percentage to it, that percentage can be correlated to, that's a percentage of trying to capture some of your indirect costs.
Got it, got it. Okay, so, and it, and across the industry and the Parks and Recs world, is it done like, or you said it's done differently? Everybody does it, everybody has their own little world and do it a little differently?
I don't think this is going to surprise you because with innovation being one of our core values, this is an opportunity where we're trailblazing. We may be able to connect the dots of how to show a structure that can be replicated, where there has been directives that are specific to each of the municipalities. In my experience, Cindy has a little bit different experience from her working in Cary and then in Wake Forest, that the nuance is that the, the structure hasn't been put in place. One, this oftentimes not a skill set at the park professional. It's, the skill set is about the wellness, the camaraderie, the well-being, that creating that experiential moment.
It's the programming side of it.
Yeah, that, that feel-good. And so to ask programmers to step and do an analysis, is in where we have expanded our staff to have a parks analyst. So I don't know, Cindy, if you So I don't know, Cindy, if you want to add anything. I'll just say, because it's part of what makes a community great. And for so long, we were able to provide recreation and leisure at a nominal cost. And external expenses were not escalating like they are now. It was perceived as this is the town's path forward of what we are providing to our task base. Is there anything that you want to add?
No, I think, I think when you think about, like Mary said, cost recovery is the, the broad picture. When you go back to that ties and tiaras slide, that gets more into the programmatic, that we're looking for answers there. Kind of going by what you all said, you didn't want a fee for socials. That helps us out. But my staff, the programmers, we need to understand what you want us to recover. And we already know that we're not going to touch those indirect costs. But if ties and tiaras, you know, is, I use the word base cost. The supplies, the decorations, the staff. Let's just say that totals $500, okay? If you want me to recoup that $500, then I'm going to use that methodology that she had up on the board.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I see that and I hear that. And I'm not, just so you know, I'm not advocating that we do 100% cost recovery either. I just want to make sure I'm clear on, and I don't want you to do that either, I think. So, because, because you, you said this, Mary, this is all a balance. So, sure, we could give you a number and say, we want you to go out and do cost recovery at, I'm just going to say, you know, 20%. Or, or, you know, that forty-four number is good, keep everything, whatever. But there's a balance because there is the market too. So you can't, so I'm a little nervous about giving you like a hard number. I can give you a number, but I'm, or give you some direction for sure. But I'm, I'm really concerned about giving a hard number and looking for a hard number when we need to compare to the market and evaluate what others are doing as well. So that, so just so you know, that, I don't know how you, you help me get by that, but.
If, if I can continue to go back out broad, parks budget eighty percent funded towards indirect, twenty percent towards direct. So it's, you know, like what Councilmember Johnson was suggesting is that the metrics behind the percentage. And that when we're talking cost recovery at the program level, it's one component that rolls into what we provide as services. And it's, I have a little bit of trouble of articulating this, but it's, it's our menu offering that is supporting us at the end of the day where we're a business. When we try to jump from the feel-good and the service to showing us as a structure of a business, this is a platform in business is correlated to performa. What is our performa for our programs? What is our performa for our trips? What is our performa for our socials? And that is a moving variable that, as I've used the word, we're backing into it. I see from where I started, like the very first time that Brandon and I were having conversations, he brought up cost recovery and asked me what my experience was with cost recovery. And my answer was, when I worked with Burlington, I knew that the average was thirty-four percent. I was the aquatics director. Aquatics, as you hear, big energy pool. Energy translates into dollars. So for the expectation of the aquatics, revenue offsetting expenses was 27%. And then my expertise, if you will, was just looking at expenses and revenue. My expertise has been enhanced, being part of this team, because I'm getting granular into those metrics and analytics and helping to truly understand how this is a component of our service offering. And that service offering has a cost. And what is it that we're looking to recoup?
No, I, I, that's, I get that. I get that too. And, you know, I'm struggling, like, you're probably struggling with that, how to, how to, what to recommend us too. So I'm struggling with what to recommend to you.
I like the point.
So, let me, I do have a couple of really quick questions. So on slide three, when you talked about the last couple of years and the cost recovery percentage, I, I, I can do a lot of assumptions. I don't want to do that. Do you have any, can you just give us real quickly why you think we went from like sixteen to thirty-two and then up into the forties?
Yep. A, a big key for the last two years of F I twenty-three and F I twenty-four, that differential of 30% between resident and non-resident.
Okay.
And perhaps field rentals.
Okay, okay. Okay.
And, yeah, twenty-one was COVID.
Where there was an impact just coming out of COVID.
Okay, okay, okay.
As I have heard from staff for a while, we were talking the pre-COVID numbers, post-COVID numbers.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's helpful to me. Because I will tell you from, for the non-residents, I'm okay. I wouldn't, I would go way more than 30% differential. I would say, figure out as best you can what that 100% number looks like. I would, I would do that, I think. Except you need to balance it with, does that mean we will or will not have a program? And are we competitive? And will no one sign up? So that's why you don't.
You're hired as a programmer, Liz, you're kidding me.
Don't, don't quote me on that number. But I will tell you, I think we need to have a, a, a bigger differential.
So, can I ask you a question? So if, if we just say the non-resident rate was $30, you're saying that you want that resident, non-resident rate to be 60? You want it doubled?
No.
No, I'm, I'm talking about just cost, yeah, so, okay, we're talking different things. I'm talking cost recovery. If you're figuring, because you must figure out for your programming, you know, what the cost recovery is. And if you're charging a resident $30 for something, that's not at 100% cost recovery. Or maybe it is, but maybe it's not. I'm hoping it's not. And then I would say, then you charge the non-resident what that 100% cost recovery would be. So going back to your tiara thing. If your tiara thing is your 100% cost recovery is, well, that's not, that's, forget it. That's a bad example. Yeah, that's a bad example.
Yeah, just pull you out of the weeds. What I have heard is that there is a consensus that the resident rate supersedes the, the non-resident exceeds the resident rate. And right now, what I'm telling you is the differential jump between the resident rate to non-resident is 30%. As when we're setting fees. Now, what we also want to take into consideration is that we have unique borders.
Yeah.
We have very unique borders of our community. And I hear, I'll share this in your center, the, the neighbors really appreciate the opportunity of socialization, of community, of getting to participate. We see it at the M A F C facility, that what a gift that facility is, where there's not the, the path that has to go to that private fitness club, but that there is a community-based amenity and how that's an asset, both to non-residents who get the benefit of, although it may be at 30% differential, is still very low compared to the private sector.
Yeah, okay, okay. So, yeah, let, let's move on. Because I do, there needs to be a differential between resident and non-resident. Residents need to be given first priority and all that. And that, you know, for signing up and then, and then non-residents. So, yeah, okay. That is, that is much as direction you could get from me on that tonight. On, on slide 12, so I thought this, this is not your recommendation to do zero, 30%, and 50%. Because you said you want to have a discussion and dialogue. But what is it today? Can you quantify what it is? What does that look like today if we put these, everything in these buckets?
If I was to quantify it, we've been looking at a range. And when we've looked.
I like ranges.
When we've looked at a range, we have above base. So if we're looking at enhanced, and we have the middle is 30, then we would drop down to 15, and then we would go up 15. So then we go to 45. So then we have three potential fees with a percentage. And then we would base that against market.
Okay, okay, yeah. Because you got, you had, you had a factor of the market. And otherwise, they'll all go to the Y, or they'll all go wherever. Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, that's, that helps.
I will say, in the last probably four to five months, I've been here almost eight months, we've been doing 30% about.
Okay.
So we take that base rate, add 30% to that, that's your resident rate. Thirty percent on top of that is your non-resident rate.
Okay, okay. All right, that's helpful, that's helpful. And then, I'm, I'm sorry, I got two more quote ones. As far as the basic events that we have, so Fourth of July, we are not making revenues at all over food trucks or anything that happens. We're not making, and are we looking at making revenue off of selling glow sticks or selling T-shirts? Or, I mean, there, there are other ways to make revenue.
Staff is evaluating that. And as Scranton Johnson's alluded to, we have had ticket sales in the past for Spring Fest and then even this past year for Red, White &amp; Blue. We are looking at, what does it look like if a vendor was to pay for their location? We're not looking to charge admission. That is nowhere in our.
I'm not advocating that. Yeah, yeah, thank you for not advocating that.
And then it's very low compared to the base of what supports special events.
Okay, okay, okay. And then, okay, lastly, about the senior center, I, I differ a little bit from Councilmembers Crogans, Johnson. I do think we need to be charging non-residents. I would be fine with doing that. I honestly think the participants at the senior center, the residents, would understand that. And so I, but I, I may be alone on that. I, I do think our residents should still keep getting the educational and the fitness and the game time stuff. I, I'm fine with that. The socials and trips, I think, I think everyone needs to have a little bit skin in the game on that as well. My fear, and I see this in other hats that I wear and other work that I do, if they don't have a little skin in the game, they'll sign up and then they don't show up. And so then we're left holding the bill for whatever. The, the, you know, the van that we had to rent, or the driver, or the, yeah, or the tickets at the theater, or the, you know, the food, the, you know, whatever it is. So, but I do, you know, I do agree we, we need to help our senior community. I'm, I'm 100% behind that, 100% behind it. That facility is obviously for social and mental health and all kinds of things that are incredibly important. And I think Councilmember Robotti said it too. That is a value I, I hold too, from our community, especially our, our older community. So, so I don't know if I gave you a lot of direction.
You did, you did. That was helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Mayor For Time Garry Miller.
Yeah, thank you. A good presentation. I am more of a data guy. So out of the 1.4 million that you're recovering, how much is that from residents and how much is it from non-residents?
Great question. Breakfast will be served. I, I don't know.
Okay, all right. Okay, I, I thought you had it. Good question, so, okay. All right, so, so, so that is one I, I want to know. The reason I'm asking for all that is how, what is the participation level of the residents? And what is the participation level of people from outside? If we are getting strained, like if it is 70% non-residents and 30% residents, then it is indirectly putting strain to our, all the other things that you talked about. So that's the first thing to start with. And, and the second thing, I would say, I strongly feel that Morrisville is a different market. The per capita income is close to 110, 120,000 here. And when a person, you know, a family wants to bring their kids, they're not coming to get a volunteer serve them, okay? I, I stopped, you know, taking my kid there because I saw no value coming out of it. So, so I would strongly suggest have good coaches and get the people back. You know, they will be more than happy to pay. And, and to allude to what Anna's saying, if people are not able to pay, there might be a percentage of it, you can have a program for them. But that should not, you know, let go the competitive sport. Because if I'm going, I'm spending time, you know, taking my kid to the soccer park. And if that is not competitive enough, I don't want to take him anymore. So, and that you already alluded to. So I think that model needs to change because it's not anyone who is coming and teaching and that. And coming to the senior center thing, I also want to know, the last two buckets, how much money are we talking about? Because there's a lot of discussion about that. And in my view, is it really worth the grind? You know, what are we talking, 5,000, 2,000, or 10,000? What are we talking about? If it is like less than 25,000, I'll say, put it in the budget and have a way to ensure that, as, as Liz was saying, they don't take advantage, like signing up and not showing, but keep funds so that that automatically takes care of. Because honestly, we are not doing a whole lot for our seniors. You know, Cary has the Go Cary. You can basically book a call, can take it to the doctor, and come back, all free. We don't do that. You know, there are so many things that we don't do. And these are like the bare minimum for me. You know, like we, there are so many other things that we could do. We are not in a position to do. But I feel if these things are so small compared to the whole big picture, I would just calculate how much money it is. And I should not be saying, but suck it up into our programming. You know, that's, that's pretty much easy. And that'll at least have our seniors happy. That's the least we could do. And, and also, I would like to know how, I'm, I'm okay with M A F C because it's next to Preston, there are a lot of people, my friends, they come to M A F C and, and including, you know, Senator Shawdi, who took his, their kids, they said, that's the best swimming pool ever he has seen in North Carolina. You know, it's just wonderful. But it is okay. How much strain is it causing? M A F C can accommodate a lot of people, but the senior centers, that they need more, bigger and bigger? I want to see the numbers of how many outsiders are coming. Are we catering to that need? Then I got a problem. Then I'm basically, what is a cost recovery kind of a thing? It's, it's more than cost recovery. It's, it's, is the lease and the, all kinds of things. So I, I feel knowing the percentages should determine our programming too, you know?
I can answer for the holiday luncheon. There were, we did a, a cost analysis afterwards. And the non-residents, there were about 40 to 43% that were non-resident at that event. So.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I still stick to, you know, non-residents, let them pay what they had to pay. But the Go Cary is not free, is not for Morrisville. That's okay. As much as, you know, we can go to their program where it's not free. I just want to basically make them feel the pain so that they come to Morrisville and reside here too, you know?
Cary's fitness classes are not free for seniors.
That's fine, but they give Go Cary free, you know? So that's more than, more than sufficient of their fair share. So that's where I, I would say, like, you know, when we are evaluating more space, it is important to figure out the percentage, you know? And, and going back to what Vicky said, you know, TCL, it attracts a lot of people and I'll, and there's no way to figure out how many are. and I've, and there's no way to figure out how many are residents and non-residents, you know, on that part, so we are catering those grounds to that part too. So, so then how would you enter into that market to basically, you know, have some cost recovery out of it? And end of the day is, we have to attract all these people into Morrisville because just not, don't think like it's a cost recovery. It is the whole ecosystem of small businesses. These guys come play, go to the restaurants, you know, have their time there, it's, it's a whole, you know, thing. I have seen on every Saturday, Sunday, the kids flood, you know, like the pizza place or, you know, the Mexican places and other places. So that is good, but having good programming is the most important, and thanks for all that you guys do.
Thank you for that framework as well. I'm hearing a consensus around bringing a presentation back that represents resident versus non-residents in our programs.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Routh, please.
Thank you for this presentation. I'm just going to chime in that I agree with a lot of what's been said, particularly Councilmember Robati, and that the differential between the resident and non-resident in general should be more than 30, so 40 or even 50%. And then with regards to the senior fees, I, yeah, I agree with Mayor Pretim Garamella's question about, you know, particularly with the senior center, so what is the percentage of non-residents that's coming in there? Regarding fees, I would still be in favor of having, or having cost recovery on some level for social and trips, but look at making it less than 30% cost recovery, maybe it's 15% or 10%. I do think trips is something that is more of a enhanced programming. But, but like Councilmember Johnson said, you want people to have skin in the game, so I think you need to charge something, but have cost recovery less than 30%.
Councilmember Routh, please.
Yeah, I, my only question that I had was, when we do like programs, like when we have instructors over there like for tennis and other programs, will we ever reach a point where, and irony is, I used to run programs many, many years ago where we had tennis coaches and it was now my little vendor, but would we make more revenue ourselves and be running in-house? Because that's what I would like to see is-
Us too.
Maybe we evaluate, like I don't know who's running any of our programs, but, you know, just like Cary Tennis Park, just, there's a lot of good tennis coaches out there, people, there's a lot of college players out there now, why don't we get them out there and running, you know, a tennis program, and then pay them an hourly rate, and then more revenues coming to Morrisville, and we can build a really good tennis program. Not that it's not good now, but I'm just curious, what is the breakdown today if somebody's running a sport, whether it's tennis or some of these other places?
So our programs right now for our contracted instructors are 80/20, so they only give us 20% of what they take in. They're handling, they're handling all the registration in most of our programs. That's something that I have, from day one, I've asked Mary about this, is this something I want to change?
I think it should be the other, I mean-
You're exactly right.
I don't understand, with all of the technology, I mean, we should be taking a majority of the revenue and run a Morrisville, like just, I'm just picking tennis, but it can be golf or whatever. So I would like a directive to the staff to, and just kind of look at that and reevaluate-
We can disagree, we're on it.
What would that, how quickly would that change potentially happen?
In time.
Okay.
In time.
I would also be curious as a number, what are the revenues coming in for all these programs when you compare?
You know, you've heard the term grandfathered. There's a benefit to those contracted organizations as well, and then looking at where do we have availability for us to start doing programming? So for example, pickleball, and where, it was just this past fall that we had that offering, and it stemmed from in-house, we didn't go out of house. So moving forward, we're trying, our model is exactly what you're saying, in-house contractors, because you hit the nail on the head, the revenue return, the ROI benefits us when they're on, underneath our umbrella versus when they're outside. So thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, so I'm coming from a slightly different direction in that most of my kids went through our internal programs, and I coached some and things like that, so I really see the value of the camaraderie and all of that, so I'd like to support just all the youth programming, keep that subsidized as much as we're able. One thing that I've heard from a couple of different places is giving our residents the first refusal essentially, like signups for like longer than, in advance, longer than we're doing now.
Okay.
Just to really try to fill us up with our own first.
Okay.
And maybe trying to back in to pricing insofar as you can know what the market is, take that and charge full recovery, non-resident, and then maybe work backwards into what our residents. So that's a different way to come, come at it. So we maybe be subsidizing 50% or not, instead of starting the arbitrary number and then adding on top of that, figure out what the cost is, what the market is, because that's what really drives it, make sure that we can recover our costs doing that. There's different ways to sort of make that work. Mayor Pretim Garamella said we can do some kind of program for people who can't afford it if we up our game and add some more coaches. There was some light, Train the Trainers, when I was doing it, and Brian helped me through that when I was coaching basketball. So maybe we can make that a little bit more robust, or set stronger expectations for the parent coaches to learn a little bit more or something. We can increase the current volunteers, or we can go out of house like some other models do, so there's different ways to get that. But Dorcas helps administer our free stipend for Town of Cary, so you have that intelligence that you can help bring our programming to that too. I mean, when I was coaching, I was like, can I donate my, my child's fee?
And pay it forward.
And pay it forward to some other child who needs it, scholarship program in some way, I think that would be nice. Some of your explanations about direct and indirect cost, another way to think about it would be marginal costs, because some of your direct costs are still kind of fuzzy. So we don't have a program, if we do a program, this is half, half an FTE plus this, plus that, so that's just another way to sort of make it a little more clear, because direct and indirect, that's for accounts. So we're layman, so that's just a thought about that. One thing that's a little out of left field, Wake Forest just became an age-friendly community, so I don't know if that's something that's more of a high level, maybe look into it someday, maybe that's more of a roundtable ask. Wake Forest just became an age-friendly community.
Age-friendly.
And that's not just for seniors, that's, that's a multiple-year program to make sure that you're meeting the needs of all the community, of all ages. So in regards to the senior center, I'm agreeing with a lot of what I'm hearing. I've done Game Town a lot, and I understand you pay a dollar for a card, and that money goes back out to people as payment, so that's great the way you guys do that now, and it's really inexpensive and it's fun for everybody. I'd really be interested in, per what Mayor Pretim Garamella was saying, is our capacity overcapacity because of so many non-residents? I don't want to turn anyone away, and the socialization, the people don't really care if it's a Morrisville resident or non-Morrisville resident, they're socializing, they're making friends across the borders, so that's a tough thing to turn them away.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Because they're, we want to be open and friendly to people who are their friends, but I do think that the social and the trips should get some cost recovery in there to have skin in the game, and the trips, they cost money. I mean, we're paying for the tickets, we're paying for that kind of stuff, so I think a little bit more cost recovery for those is fine, but I'm all about serving our residents first, and we can disincentivize the non-residents a little bit by helping those fees above 30%. So that's market-driven, I know you guys will be able to work that out, and Billy will just work his magic on the numbers, and that's going to be fine too. I like the idea of bringing as much of our programming in-house as possible, that builds institutional wisdom, we can keep on growing our programs, changing the programs, and you learn more by doing, so we can increase and make better programs by having our own people doing it. It was talked about a while ago about more data-driven decision-making, about MFC and things like that, and I'm probably going to be bringing forth the roundtable again about the possibility of WCPSS employees, maybe seniors and stuff coming to MFC if there's capacity, so that's just something to sort of say, that's still in the back of my mind. Thank you. And was there anything else Vicki wanted to hear from all of us about? Did I answer that question, or is there more?
So if I could, whoa, that's pretty awesome. So I might take a stab at summarizing what I've heard from the council, and I thank everyone for including comments related to the senior fees. Everybody that I've heard tonight wants to know about the use of Morrisville residents versus non-residents, that's a, that's a key indicator for us to kind of base some of our support and funding decisions, you know, about this program as well as maybe other programs across the park system. It sounds like the skin in the game thing is, is, needs better definition, and we look to get some scenarios, not just, I, I'd like to see a zero-cost scenario, a scenario with the, you know, like this 10 or 15% that Councilmember Fender mentioned, and maybe a 30%, just to kind of see what those different tiers look like, because I, you know, I don't know how much a holiday luncheon costs, is it $1,000? Is it $3,000? I, I, I don't know, but that would be helpful based on that, as well as the trips. As we know, trips are getting, you know, fees of everything is getting more expensive, but what is a typical trip in the last year? Is a bus and gas and a driver considered a direct, or is that an indirect cost? So just understanding how that model works, but having that as a small, you know, the zero, you know, the same kind of thing, and that way we have a little bit of a menu to kind of discuss, and also understanding what that true cost is as Mayor Pretim mentioned, are we talking 15,000 annual cost, are we talking 25? Just looking at the total cost of that kind of programming would also be helpful to help us make decisions about how that expense would be covered. So thank you all.
Thank you. So I wasn't quite finished, but I wanted to make sure that I answered your question about that. Another thing about like our big events, when we have bouncy houses and things like that, I'd be really in favor of taking away tickets and just letting, the lines are long already, might as well have people be able to do those for free and just have more of them, big events. I know there's the balance between having too many food trucks and not enough, it seems like we haven't found the place where there's too many yet. The lines are always really long, so that's, that's hard though, because we have a lot of people coming through 3rd of July and things like that, and we learned a lot between 3rd of July and DiWali, so kudos to the entire staff for making, we keep on getting better at these big events. So those are my thoughts, is there anything else, Councilmember Scranton Johnson?
Okay. And Garamella?
Yeah, I think just piggybacking, I think I'm on both of advisors for Cary DiWali, our Hum Sub, you know, they charge a lot of money to have stalls there, and if I'm hearing that we are not charging anything, that is a missed opportunity, clearly, you know? I think we should do it because they make a lot of money, and all the food trucks which are coming here, we're giving them, you know, free, okay, come, we have 10,000 people here, you know, kind of a thing, so I think we should use every opportunity and come up with some unique stuff about Morrisville that is not sold anywhere else. And I think like it could be a good shirt, or it could be something, you know, like, I, I don't know what it is, but you guys have your creative hat in, and that way people will crave to come, you know, to buy that. That will generate a lot of stuff, and just these are ideas, like, you know, when you have huge crowds, capitalize on that.
That's it, thank you. Giving you the last word, him?
I'll open the floor for senior, if there's anything.
Thank you all.
I think this was rich discussion. I appreciate that balance that you struck between going broad and then coming narrow. It's, it's a moving topic to discuss, and I feel like we're all in a better place tonight than where we were at the beginning, so I appreciate the feedback and the direction, and I look forward to continuing this further, and I hope that we will serve you well as being trailblazers, and that we can continue and expand this out, whether it's at future conferences, et cetera. So thank you for your support and for your interest and your dedication, not only to the residents, but to that recreation and leisure life well-balanced for Morrisville and to our senior leadership, and a huge heartfelt gratitude to the staff that are on the front line working day in and day out, so thank you all around.
Thank you, yeah, we want to thank the staff. Thank you all for staying. This was a great start to the retreat, really well done, great discussions by everybody. To that end, I'd like to recognize the town manager for any final thoughts before we adjourn.
Thank you, thank you to our staff. Again, I thought two really strong presentations tonight, a lot of good conversation, a lot of good discussion, that's what these are about, so thank you for that. Again, tomorrow noon in the parking lot, the shuttle bus will be here, we'll be loading that up, we intend to be on the road by 12:30 at the latest, we've got about a three, a little over three-hour trip down there, we want to give you a little shit, a chance to be able to settle in your room once you get there. We do have a 4:30 to 6:30 session tomorrow, followed by a group dinner, and then we'll get to it full-time on Saturday, and then a good chunk of Sunday. But again, 12 o'clock tomorrow, we will provide lunch for you, we'll have drinks and snacks on the bus, minimal activity, we, we got a little bit of a mixed review, but not, not going to do any work on the way down, but might do a little conversation depending on what people are up to. I know there's any number of us that are maybe not at 100% weather-wise over the course of the week, so we may, we may take that easy to let people charge up, but we look forward to seeing you tomorrow. Thank you, Mary.
I entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Councilmember Robati, a second by Mayor Pretim Garamella. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that's it, 9:10, we are adjourned.